Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 29th, 2017 School Committee Meeting. We'll start the meeting with a roll call. Mr. Conroy.
Here.
Mr. Catalano.
Present.
Superintendent.
I'm here.
Ms. Roach and Ms. Sewell will not be here this evening. We don't have teacher representatives or student representatives as they are busy readying for the first official day of school with students in the buildings. We'll just start off by welcoming everybody to the 2017-2018 school year. It was a great morning, this morning, of all of the teachers here up at the middle high school, really excited and wishing everyone a great back-to-school tomorrow. We will first announce that the meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 PM on Comcast Channel E or Verizon Channel 37. You might jump around a little bit on the agenda tonight, so Nancy, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. We have had two fabulous days with teachers back this week. A full day of professional development yesterday focused on strategies for personalizing learning, going deeper into that, which has been our focus for quite a few years. In many ways, it's been our focus for 10, 12 years. How to meet the needs of students better, take them from where they are and take them as far as they can go. So, teachers participated in professional development yesterday designed by the BAPL team, BAPL standing for Blended and Personalized Learning Leadership Team that met a couple of times this summer, includes teachers and administrators to develop the professional development taught by our own staff and organized, and a lot of great dialogue. And then today, we continued that with welcoming everybody back, honoring veteran teachers who have had at least 20 years with Milis, granting professional status, teaching status, to Riley Stevens and Beckett Lung. And we had a very moving speech by our School Committee Chair that teachers very much appreciated. And then teachers spent, had faculty meetings, et cetera, and are putting last-minute touches on everything to be ready in the morning for students. We were excited and raring to go. We have some new hires that I'd like to introduce the committee to, and I did include this, some information in the welcome-back letter that went out today. We have a new Director of Digital Learning and Innovative Use of Technology, Jennifer Starr, who's going to be wonderful. We had a retirement with Kay Tessier, and we wish Kay well. Jennifer comes to us from the Northborough-Southborough Public Schools and has over 20 years of experience working in technology integration. She's already proven her worth and is very excited to work with and support our Milis teachers. Tim Corcoran is a .5 special educator and paraprofessional in the middle school, coming to us from the Except Collaborative. Paula Damaris is the .8 BCBA that is district-wide. She comes to us from the private sector, has many years of experience. We only included the last couple of employment places on your, what are usually blue sheets. They're white tonight. But she has a wealth of experience and a Masters of Education in ABA, Applied Behavioral Analysis and Autism, from Endicott College. Susan Manzon joins us as a .5 teacher of the Visually Impaired, and we're very excited to have Susan join us. She has two degrees, or Bachelors from Boston University, a Masters from Boston College, and then a Certificate of Advanced Graduate Studies from Boston College as well. Elise Malloy is our new Adjustment Counselor at the elementary level, April Lehman having moved up to the middle school position. She has her Bachelors from Providence College and her Master of Social Work at Boston College and has over 15 years' experience in, mostly in NADIC. Kevin Lau, who was in sixth grade last year teaching social studies, is moving into fifth grade because Kelly Rao is returning from maternity leave. We also have Michelle Pansioke returning from maternity leave, and Liz Shea. The other fifth-grade teacher, Julie Muldoon, is coming to us from Sacred Heart School in Boston, and she has her Masters from Simmons College. Erin Sullivan is the high school adjustment counselor, also having both her Bachelor of Arts and a Masters from Boston College. I think somebody referred to that as a double eagle.
They did, indeed.
So, we're very pleased, very excited by the staff that are joining us. As I said today, they all have experience elsewhere and are able to provide us with fresh eyes to look at our programming, look at how we do things, and help us with that continuous improvement that we're all looking to do. And we're just very, very excited about the underlying expertise, talent, and attitudes that they all bring with them. The, let's see. We can go to either the facility update or the budget personnel proposal, either one.
Want me to do the school calendar?
Sure.
And see if we give John a little more time?
Sure.
Yeah, good idea, Jody, thank you. So, we have some proposed dates for School Committee Meeting. School Committee Meeting is throughout the 2017-2018 year. Since we are only a committee of three tonight, maybe we want to socialize these and see if anybody has any conflicts with Carrie and with Jen, just before we set the calendar. I think at a minimum, we can set the September 12 date as the next meeting, so we'll set that one and confirm that one. And if we can distribute this out and just get some feedback from Jen and Carrie, just to make sure that they don't have any conflicts that they know of already, that would help us adjust any of these. So, if we do that as the next step. So, our next meeting will be September 12. So, we can confirm that, and then we'll take October 4.
Do we want to, do we want to do, do we need to, and do we want to do a third one, a second one in September? Do we have, do we have business to do, meaning I'd rather front-load some of these meetings? I don't know. I mean, unless we don't have stuff, I don't want to have a meeting just to have a meeting.
Right.
But, well, then that would screw, because then it would be the following week.
What happens is, I'm just scanning through now, because what happens is, we go from September 12 to October 3, which is, that's like three weeks.
Three weeks, exactly.
And then we go the 3rd, the 17th, then we go three weeks again. But if we added another meeting, say the 26th of September.
We can just adjust.
Then we can go October 10 and 24.
Uh huh.
I mean, it takes us off the 1st and 3rd.
Right.
It just moves us to 2nd and 4th. But then, we could get back in November to 1st and 3rd by going the 7th and the 21st.
Yeah.
Because then we don't have two.
I hold Tuesdays open. I understand that people, other people travel and have work, so I get that. But, I mean, my Tuesdays are open, so whatever dates, I don't have any travel planned right now.
Yeah, maybe we can throw it out, just to not have two months in a row where we're going.
Yeah, three.
Three weeks without a meeting.
Yep.
Yeah, exactly.
So, when you propose for the second date in September, 26? Because I'll put this in the email to Carrie.
Yeah. I'd say the 26th, and then I'd move the, I would consider moving the October meeting to the 2nd and 4th, which would put us to the 10th and the 24th.
Okay.
Then.
The 7th will stay.
And then we could, then we'll be back to normal.
Yep.
Because town meeting, too, town meeting should be November 6.
So, we definitely, we would want to have that October 24th. And putting, and putting that, because remember, the timeframe, I mean, they started asking for warrants.
Right.
Like, in September.
Right.
I want to say in September 20 something.
Yeah, and we only had, like, two weeks, so.
So, we.
A three-week gap might actually hurt us.
Hurt us.
Hurt us if we.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I think the 12th and the 26th.
Okay. I know already I won't be here the 26th, but I'm sure someone wouldn't mind cheering for the evening, if that's okay.
That's going to happen. We have three people tonight.
Yeah.
First meeting of the year.
Yep.
Good idea. Okay. That's great. Mr. Engler. It's all queued up, and I was able to add a couple still shots of the gym, so all you have to do is press the down button. Thank you for joining us. It's been a busy, busy time for facilities.
Hi.
Hello.
How are you?
Doing. So, just a quick rundown of the facilities of all buildings. This summer, there was productive, so all of those done, and it looks like that building seems to be in good shape. Nothing concerned, of course, we haven't had much rain to worry about as far as tie ground is. The rain, we did get, we did get some, we did get some leaks, though we're still working on that. We got approval, like, you know, like a whole new roof aspect of all the cafeteria. So, knowing that the new tie ground did go through, I'm trying not to spend all that money, just taking baby steps and see if we can get us through these two years without spending all that money if possible. So, but we're doing what we can, and we'll see how that works as we're going along. You did give us approval for this summer to work at the high school, like, two different projects. One was working on four bathrooms, two along the superintendent's hallway, which is outside of gymnasium, and two right down here outside the library for the two gang bathrooms. The ones that are mostly used by the public during events when they're hosting. All we were able to do so far, up until this point, is to redo the flooring, putting down the two-inch mosaic tile, which was an overlay on all of them. We did do some around the, we did bullnosing around the base as well, where there was existing bullnosing that needed to be extracted. And it's actually buttoned up correctly, unlike the other ones. So, picture's really hard to tell. On the way out, if you guys see, we left the door open, it doesn't lighten them up a little bit. We didn't want to get too light of color because we're concerned on if and what might happen going forward. We didn't, we are doing a new procedure on how we're painting them as well, just using ammonia instead of, instead of the substance that, instead of the solution that might . Where we were, as far as the budget on how we affect the things, we only budgeted on that with the grid. So, the next step is the partitions. The type of partitions, hopefully, they'll be still so funded, we prepared some pictures. The two gag bathrooms did get painted as well, the two bathrooms in the gymnasium hallway. It's all tile, so there's nothing that we can, except what's difficult part was trying to put the three different tiles together, which was a tough, tough choice. But this is one of the, this is one of the ones down by the superintendent's hallway. Four pictures, it's another one down the superintendent's hallway. Again, they still have a little bit more gravel in these pictures were taken, but hopefully by tomorrow morning, they will be fine. We think it's a third wash-in, is that, this evening, before they move to the soul. That is the gang bathroom in the vent room. And again, the partitions, I was originally contemplating about going with black on these, as far as vandalism goes. But after seeing how this is tying all in, there's a good possibility, depending on price range, I might just go with the gray and then bring some color in through the walls, adding some of the maroon or the burgundy, and just to keep it the Milis colors. At the same point, get a little bit more of the design as possible. But you can tell that the partitions are fairly old and under the period as well. And that's still the women's room, which was a light, can't take that, a light blue at one point, a light green, so I think the color will work out a little bit better on that. Would you have the gymnasium here as well?
Yep.
So, the other project was the gymnasium floor. It was stripped down, it had not been taken down to its finish in three-plus years from living floor. It was taken down to its, down to the bare wood. The wood, there was nothing that we needed to do to any of the slats of the wood, so that was a big notice. They were able to refinish it due by the, the school committee did recommend that we leave the central logo as much as we can. I know there's emails that went back and forth there for a little period of time, and that was pretty much trying to find a replica, a replication of that 30-year logo. It was a little difficult, but I think if you go out there, it's, if you put picture against picture, and it's pretty darn, pretty darn close. So, the only difference that you might see in this picture is the Lohawk Territory wording, lettering. It was a lot thinner with a gray, with a gray background, with a gray shadow. Unfortunately, we were running out of time, so we had to end up going with these letters. What we're hoping to do in the future, was have more pictures.
One more.
We're hoping to, in the future as well, is to replicate those lettering in the, at the far ends of each court. There's one more code that we can still add on to this, where you can see where that dark brown is. That's where it used to be red and a little.
Yep.
A lot of gymnasium, a lot of refinishing, they've got, it's gotten away from being so, it's definitely as well, so we were able to do this, which did not well. Instead of the black lines to pass, we even had, we added the gray, which you can barely see in there, but that helps out for the fireball. It's now up to NCO regulations as well, so we wanted to try and escape those at some point.
Oh, nice. Good. Awesome.
For event cases. So, hopefully, at another point, if we, if we have the fires, and at a rate you can see the dark brown, it's actually a concept around the city, around the court itself. I really think I missed that pop a little bit more. Time frame, we were unable to do it this time around. But we're keeping the words Milis in both ends, and with the hardwood, we're going to go light color, you know, getting the letter. So, I really feel like that's going to make it pop if we're doing so. It did come out well. It is, will be usable for the kids tomorrow, which is nice. And volleyball has been on for a couple of times already. It has been, it was funny, I was mentioning this to Nancy earlier today, and that was people actually came over and opened up the door last night, they're here for a meeting, and actually took their shoes off to walk on the door. So, that was pretty nice. But both projects went very well, both projects, one's still in, working pretty hard. This project is pretty much done, we are on budget on this. I know there was a conversation about that logo, if and when. There is still enough money, if that is to go through, we do need to change that logo, there's enough money, and the budget's still coming out. So, that's the only reason that I actually pulled the trigger, as Nancy was on vacation. So, but we were able to, well, we get all, all of it in time. But besides that, I think it was, it was an interesting summer, to say the least. Restored staff, the main staff. The, the main staff, restored staff worked very hard. Summer crew this year was amazing, with five kids from the summer crew. And Consey was hearing compliments about their, how they were doing their work, how respectful they were, how hard work they were, and it was, it was a beautiful summer. Glad for that, and hopefully, next year, we can afford to cost.
Madam Chair. So, John, on the roof on the Clyde Brown, I appreciate and respect trying to keep it or spending what money. We've already allocated that money. Are we going to incur additional cost if we don't all do the work at once? Meaning, if we do it piecemeal, are we now going to, with good intentions to go under budget, are we now going to spend over? Or is there a potential?
Of course, there's always potential of that. I find that to be unlikely, only for the fact that we've made such great strides to this point, as far as holding back the water that has been coming in, is like a legal haystack, trying to find a place. But we tried, we tried another new procedure, it was just like a big patch that we put down. Unfortunately, that didn't work as well as we were hoping to. The vendor was fine with picking up and reapplying it as we, as we had. And again, we haven't really had that much of that hard rain to figure out. The big thing is when the snow comes. And Nancy and I have talked about this, and that's, that's the biggest concern that I would have. It seems that when the snow comes, that's when the heaviness comes on the roof, and that's when the water comes through. So, at that point, we've made, we've made some, we've made some changes on the inside of the facility to accept the water more, where it's not absorbing into ceiling tiles, where we have actually grates. So, if you were to actually go in the cafeteria and look up, you don't see an open space, but there's grates there, still for, for unfortunately, water flow and, and air flow.
So, I'll defer to you as the facilities expert on what's the best way to approach it, but do, I don't want you to be hesitant because of budget, because we've allocated the money. So, you're, you make the best decisions for what's right for the facility, but don't, we don't think, I don't want you to be concerned about the budget where we're in the, we've already allocated that money.
I would get that as if this is my money, and I don't want to, you know, I did not spend it, if I don't, you know, if there was not another building going up in two years, then it would have been a rare, it would be good that I can put it out. But because we have that small window, and if we can, you know, if, I feel like we can save some money.
That's fine. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll just say one thing, Nancy and I snuck in last week and looked at the floor in the gym, and it looks brand-new. It looks as if it's a brand-new floor in there. It looks fantastic. So, thank you. Thanks for tracking down everything that you needed to, that was old and hard to find surrounding the logo. And it was really a treat to go in there and see it. I think that the kids will be excited, the staff was talking about it this morning. So, I think it's a great sense of pride, a lot of folks use it, the community's in there a lot, so thank you. It looks fantastic.
Thanks, John.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you very much. You can just, yeah, kind of shut it off. Thank you. Maybe just pull the projection plug. Yeah. Thank you. So, one other thing to mention about the startup of school is transportation. Within the last few days, two, three days, we have had almost 100 students, actually the parents, come in and register an additional 100 students onto the buses. So, the, prior to the past three days, the routes were set, and we, we had room on all the buses. Now, we are concerned that some of the routes might be, the buses might be too full, and we may have to make some changes to the routes. So, we are, as everyone knows, the first couple of days of busing, buses are run, usually run a little late while they're figuring out the route and who lives where. And then we might have to do, come Monday, some adjustments to the routes because of the late registrations. It's greater than ever before, and to have 100 students register so late throws everything up in the air and throws everything off. So, we just implore parents, next year, we do an incentive of a discount to register early. It helps us get our routes set. Next year, we may have to institute a week-before-school deadline or something with some way to manage so that there's not a last-minute scramble of trying to add so many kids to the routes. So, we'll be working hard on this, obviously, tomorrow and Thursday and Friday, even though there's no school Friday, to try to get everything settled by Monday.
Nancy.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Madam Chair.
Just a quick question. Do, have we thought at all about probably reaching out to the, to the parents to let them know that there's, that there may be some changes coming?
Yes, we intend to, well, we've called the parents, my office has called the parents and the Transportation Director that are not yet on a bus, that, that came in perhaps today to register their child and have had phone conversations. We did post it on our website and send out, I believe, on the list serves, that, that there will be some differences in the bus routes this year. So, tomorrow, we will once again send out on the list serves and let people know that there are, due to that many students registering late for the buses, there may be, we may have to adjust the routes, and we're not sure yet if we can actually accommodate all of the, all students, but we will certainly try our hardest to accommodate by adjusting and seeing which bus has a little bit of room.
So, Nancy, what's the, you may not have the final numbers, but are these 100 above and beyond what we were transporting last year, or is this just 100 people came in late?
No, it's just, it was just late. I will, I'll get those numbers for you for the next meeting. I do know it was over 90 students just in the last few days, but we were a little low in feeling that, prior to that, the registrations were a little low.
So, we may be where we were at last year.
I think we're a little higher than last year, but I'll, I'll bring those numbers to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Were we going to do that in working session? Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Okay. So, we'll talk that in working, so I think we can move to some of the reports. The Elementary School Building Committee. For the latest with the Elementary School Building Committee, the progress has continued over the course of the summer. The design, the filed design document, it's called DD, I forgot the second D. It might just be document. There's a packet that gets delivered to the MSBA for their review. There's no more, there aren't additional approval steps that are required, but the milestones that were originally scheduled to occur over the summer have all remained on track. We are still tracking to a groundbreaking in sometime in November of this fall. There is quite a bit of activity with different stakeholders in town. A couple of weeks ago, there was a meeting with a safety subcommittee that included the Chief of Police, the Fire Chief, and other members of the school administration, along with the specialists from the architect firm and the project management company. Last week, there was a meeting on energy, so there are. Last week, there was a meeting on energy, so there are certain requirements that the MSBA puts forth in all of these projects to make sure that the building is sustainable and that it's, that we're environmentally conscious as we build the new, the new facility. So, those meetings happened. We have engaged with the town of Milis's energy manager, who we share with Medway. So, Bob Weiss, he was in attendance as well. So, things are moving full steam ahead. The, the meetings of the ESBC are now taped. They're not live, but they are posted 24 hours after, after they're held. So, I would encourage anyone that is looking to have more information, either to come to the meetings or to view them either via Facebook or on the Milis Community Media channel, is their, or their Facebook page, because they are posting those as well. So, that's the latest on the school building committee and the CHIPS status for the new building.
Madam Chair, the, one of the two meetings we've had regarding the CHIPS review, CHIPS being a energy program by which we qualify for points with the MSBA for greater reimbursement. And if we can do various activities, there's been a review of the types of appliances and the systems going in the building, the new building, and many different ways that we qualify for points leading up to CHIPS certification and to make sure the building is as green as possible and for sustainable energy. So, this is the summary of, of the credits that we are pursuing as a committee, and many of them, there, there are over 13 actions that we must take. Many of them will require a letter of resolution from the school committee or a policy to be adopted. For example, we currently, it is state law, the anti, no idling policy. We do have a, signs posted that idling is not allowed, but now we must adopt an anti-idling policy officially as a school committee so we can submit it. So, this packet is a summary of many of the things we will be doing, and as we go along, some of them have earlier deadlines than other things. So, I'll be working toward, working with the chair to bring those to you. They did provide us with some sample letters of resolution, some sample policies, and Jody has done a great job organizing them in a binder and will be working on those for the next few months as a committee.
Great. And for, this, this was all sort of new information for us as we went down this path on the new facility, but if memory serves, I think the CHIPS stands for constructing high-performing schools. And as Nancy mentioned, that gets us reimbursement points from the MSBA if we qualify for all of these. And what CHIPS equates to, a lot of people talk about LEED status as they talk about green buildings. So, the, the CHIPS equates to kind of a LEED silver status, which is now actually the highest status that there is, is silver. So, it's a, it's a very stringent exercise that they put us through. It is something that they are very adamant about. So, there's been some question in the public of how green is the building going to be? Is it going to be sustainable? This, these are the parameters that we work within with the architects and the project managers to make sure that, that we're building a building that's going to be energy efficient, that's going to be sustainable, and that we're being responsible in the building of, of the new school.
Okay. Just finally, in the only last information I have for you are in your purple folders as handouts tonight, an overview of the need for the .4 ELL teacher because, and I got an update today because we've had a couple new registrants. So, we've had this year over 27 families that are new to Milis, new registrants, that indicate that they speak, that another language in addition to English is spoken in the home, which means we review and make sure that we're providing the families with the services they need by having our ELL teacher speak to the families. And of those 27 new families, 11 students will require testing to see if they are in need of English language learner instruction. And the, so the total is even actually greater than last year. So, that is one of the updates I have for the committee. The, also in your packets, you have an update from April U. as to the revolving accounts and where they stand at this point. We've to collect what is owed the district in terms of cafeteria, athletic, and other obligations from families, and that has, the secretaries have done a tremendous job along with Mr. Grant and Mr. Fallon in the cafeteria. Mr. Grant for athletics, and that has been successful this summer, and we really appreciate that families try to fulfill their obligations. The third page in that handout is a summary of school choice and the beginning balance, what we anticipate bringing in in school choice, which, which is stable. We anticipate it being approximately what it was last year or a little higher. And then, what we anticipate our ending balance to be very preliminary, of course. And the final page is the one page at a glance of the final school choice account for FY '17. So, this is final end-of-year actuals. There were about $7,000 lower than we had projected because there were some negative year-end balances in revolving accounts that cannot, cannot be negative. So, we had, for example, the full-day kindergarten fund, we had to cover, cover some of those expenses from choice so that those accounts would not go into a negative balance. I can ask Ms. Yu if you have any detailed questions. I can either ask her to attend the next meeting or provide you with the detail on that.
Nancy, on the school choice history.
Uh-huh.
It's choice tuition out. We've got people going out of district. I'm confused by that column. What is that?
Um...
Because what I think is missing, what I think is missing is another column between spent and choice tuition out.
Yeah.
Ending balance.
You're right.
Could you add, I think what she's trying to highlight is that money's going out of the district, but it's confusing in this context. If you could, in between spent and choice tuition out, have an ending balance.
Actually, and I think it might be mislabeled, choice tuition out in, in your budget books is what, how many students choice out of Milis, which is less, or approximately half of the number of students that choice in. And that amount is actually taken off the cherry sheets from chapter 70, so it, it doesn't affect this balance per se. You're right.
I don't, I actually, for me, this, this sheet should only be what we have for the ending balance.
Right.
I don't think that, that column's necessary. I think it's good in a budget look, outlook.
Right.
When we're talking about a working document, the ending balance is more important.
I, I would agree. Yep. We, we'll revise that.
I think the choice out is good for us when we're looking at budget and we're looking back, you know, in the years past.
Okay.
And last question. This, I'm thinking that just the header was not updated. It says, updated 8/28, but it says FY '17 projection as of June 5, 2017. Has that just not been updated?